This is Acosta.
President.
Mr. Cooper.
Present.
This is Dupree.
Present.
Mr. Heedar.
Present.
This is Torres Figueroa.
Here.
This is Strompitt.
Here.
Mr. Storch.
(coughs)
Mr. Washington.
Here.
Mr. Cooper.
Here again. It makes me feel good.
The President won that.
So let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
He said the Pledge of Allegiance.
Not yet. You want to send the covers?
Ho. Order. Ar. Uh. Ar. Carry. Call it. Hear that. Ar.
Oh, say can you see by the dawning light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land and the plain and the home of the brave?
Ar. 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 Before you, before you see it, uh, one take care of the moment to honor those that are done on the floor. Thank you. Oh, we got it.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna have a performance by our trick teams of, from the ROTC program. First we'll come in with a girls unarmed team. Um, this is a very confined space. Normally we have twenty people in the detail. Tonight we have, I think, ten. So it's just be a demonstration of what we do. And we do it for public events or something you have, you contact us.
Sergeant Major, hold on a second.
Okay, oh, sorry.
It's okay. He's eager, that's okay. Um, we're gonna take things just slightly out of order. Uh, prior to the public comments, I, I, I want to take the time to celebrate and to highlight what I feel is one of the, uh, uh, in terms of the top ten things that, uh, people talk about when they talk about the Red School District as I travel is our JRTC program. It's one of the things that they talk about. It's the largest program, uh, in, in the state. It's one of the largest programs in the country in terms of what the main quo-
Number one in the country.
I'm staying corrected. It's the number one program in the country. Uh, and it's about celebrating those things that we do exceptional. And we do this exceptional. We do this program exceptional. And, uh, and so I wanted to highlight that for you. So I've invited, uh, the best JRTC program in the country to come and just to demonstrate what they do, uh, for all of us. And I'm gonna turn over to Sergeant Major.
Thanks, sir. All right, ladies.
Forward march.
Ooh, huh? Ladies and gentlemen, that is the unarmed trick team that does that. The routine's a whole lot longer, except we're in a confined space in a short period of time. The boys will come in now and they're gonna do armed with rifles, so watch. All right, wait till they get set up.
(inaudible).
In time, fellas. Get set up for your interview, gentlemen. Guys, that one girl. Sorry, man. And she's good, too. Soon she starts. Yep. Wait, 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 wait.
One, two. Sir, Redding High School red knights, prom running Pennsylvania, United States Marine Corps Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, armed exhibition, National Drill Team Champions, are requesting permission to utilize your drill deck, sir.
Carry on.
Aye, sir. Sir, Redding High School red knights, prom running Pennsylvania, United States Marine Corps Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, armed exhibition, National Drill Team Champions, are requesting permission to leave your drill deck, sir.
Carry on.
Aye, sir.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Them students get, them students get up every morning at six o'clock and they practice hour and a half before school. So it's a big thing. Uh, I can go a little bit of the program, sir. Uh, our program is the largest in the country and it's well-known and well-documented. We had a very good year this year. We had a boot camp that we had. We took forty kids to boot camp at Camp Conrad, Wiser, Sussle, Lotta, interaction, team building, leadership building. Uh, I think our biggest accomplishment this year is we got news this week that I have six of my students received full rides to, uh, Albright University. I'm sorry. I'm glad I'm on the bus. I'm glad I'm on the bus. I'll be getting, I'll be getting some bigger names than that. Uh, I also have a gentleman to my right. It's Francisco Contreras. He is graduating on May 11th and he is the keynote speaker for his class. And he was an ROTC product and a recipient of one of those scholarships. If I can have him say a few words.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Sergeant Major said, my name Francisco Contreras. Um, I'm a graduate of Redding High, 2009. But most important, I'm a graduate of the JRTC program. Um, before I joined in the JRTC program, I was the easy tiger for gangs. Um, I, I was usually with my father, just me and my father, my younger brother. Uh, my father used to get up, uh, out of the bay around four in the morning, then go to work and come back at seven P.A. And all that time I was by myself with my brother. I didn't have nobody, a role model, to teach me courage to move on in the positive way of life. And I joined in the JRTC program. And what this Sergeant Major, why I joined, uh, Master Sergeant Kelly and Captain Bill Jimenez at that time, they picked me up and they built me. They built a leader in me. I feel that I, if it wasn't for them, I would've never had the opportunity to graduate from high school and be able to have the opportunity to go from, uh, to a college. And not just, uh, being the first of my family to graduate with a college degree and the honor from Redding University. Thank you. So I'm just here to, just say thank you to the JRTC program. Thank you guys for supporting this program. I hope you guys keep supporting this program 'cause it does change life. And if it wasn't for this program, I probably would've been another, uh, sat-tat, a dropout or somebody in the gang or something like that. So thank you to the program. Thank you everybody for supporting it. Thank you.
He's kinda like an alpha sandal stick. He's gonna be a police officer and he's already getting his interview, uh, this week by the Redding Police Department.
Just, just, just a quick, just wanna throw some things out, uh, for the audience. Forty-five cadets are in active duty in the military currently. Forty-five of forty-six senior graduates last year, graduated last year. Uh, of those seniors that were in RJ, uh, JRTC, forty-five of the forty-six graduated. The forty-six is graduating this year.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, thirty-four students from the ROTC attend American universities currently. Two students receive ROTC scholarships worth a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And we're, as we've said, we're the largest ROTC in the country. So, um, I think that's important. I think that's noteworthy. Uh, and, um, I think it's one, as I said earlier, is one of the things that we did well, uh, that this board, the Red School District Board Directors and its administration did in bringing this program. And, uh, I, I was on the board. I was the board president at the time. I would like to take credit that it was my idea. (laughing) But it really wasn't. There were two, three other board members who, who championed this and who led the cause. And I think it's, I just want, and I know, uh, Sergeant Major's has something for them. I'll tell you.
Yes, sir. I'll point it up to you, sir, and you can just read what it says. Okay. Oh, wait a minute, he's coming. Come here. Anthony. Anthony, he's coming down.
That's okay, that's okay. He's here.
No, he's not, Anthony. Go back up. (laughing)
(inaudible).
I'm gonna read this. The, there are actually three board members who really pushed this. Uh, one is no longer with us, Rod McDowall, who's a board member. The other two who led the charge was Dr. Eve Kimball, uh, and Rod Steffey. Rod Steffey was the former, uh, police chief. And these plaques, nice plaques, um, reads, Redding High School in, um, uh, JRTC September and it started nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand thirteen. Present this one to Dr. Eve Kimball. And I should put my glasses on so I can see. "In appreciation for your foresight, efforts, and support in developing and promoting the Redding High School Marine Corps Junior Reserve Officer Corps program for the past sixteen years. From the instructors and cadets of the Redding High School JRTC, April twenty-four, two thousand thirteen, the change is forever." And it's this nice plaque. "Mr. Steffey," Eve Kimball's away at a conference in Alabama. Uh, and she very much wanted to be here, but she, she couldn't change her flight to get here, get back, to return to Redding any faster. Rod Steffey, uh, is, uh, not doing what is convalescing. Uh, but I'm sure he'll appreciate, uh, these plaques. And I think it's one of the things that he'll remember with fondness. Um, so I just, I would thank you, Sergeant Major, for, uh-
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Can you pass this round to the board?
So the only thing I, I, we're gonna hit on a little bit here is that we plan to expand, as you know, to the, to the, uh, eighth and ninth grade at the Citadel. Uh, the Marine Corps Selecting Instructor is right over to, I think he's to my right. He's right behind me. He's here tonight. It's his first sergeant, Sipco. And he's the, the, uh, gentleman who is gonna be assigned to the Citadel once all, every, all the wickets are hit and everything is done right.
Welcome.
Ladies, ladies.
And I think, uh, the only thing, the only thing I see that we don't do well for us as Marines here is we don't hit on enough students. We need to, we need to get more students in the fold. And I think by putting a permanent instructor down there, we are gonna, you know, we're gonna target them. We're not there, uh, mass, telling myself we're down there every morning, but we leave there after eight-fifteens. We don't give enough impact upon them early in their lives there. So with an instructor down there, I think it's really gonna do us some good down there. And hopefully the program goes wider, wider, wider. And we get to put a fourth instructor down there in a couple of years to come.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir.
One, just one last, I just need to say, and we'll get on, uh, this board's agenda, is this is a national magazine. It's called Glendale Parades. It's a national magazine-
Yes, sir.
-that's put out by the Marine Corps?
Yes, sir. None, by Marine Corps or by, we went to the national championships and it's put it out to the whole country. And it, and it, they, that's a company that sells goods, uh, for drills-
Right.
-for, like those rifles that we use.
Right. The, the point that I wanna make is that the student on the front cover is a Redding High School student.
He just performed tonight, come to think of it.
Okay, so I, I, I mean, it's a national program. We see national recognition. And I wanna thank you for a job well done.
Thanks, sir. And thanks for everybody's support. Thank you. Another graduate. I got one more graduate this year. She got here, so I didn't know she was gonna make it.
Oh, please, please have her stand. She's a, she's an honored high school graduate.
Yes, sir. We did everything for her. We got her a scholarship, a husband and a child. We did good for her. (laughing) And she always gives back. So a hundred percent. Have, have, wait a minute. All right, gentlemen.
What do you want me to say?
Just speak about, whatever you want, program.
Sorry, I was just picking up my cap and gown. Uh, I'll be graduating in May. Thanks to ROTC with the scholarship. Um, I love ROTC. ROTC's my second home and everyone knows that. I give them everything that I possibly have and every child I encounter, I help out. One of the fellow alumnis that was four years after I graduated, she's actually living with me right now. I'm helping her out. Um, if it wasn't for the program, I wouldn't be able to help. I'll have these students that go through here. I, I consider myself as a mentor for them, just as others, um, alumnis have been for me. I don't know what my life would be without ROTC.
One last thing before we go to public speakers and I'm gonna turn that over, uh, to Mr. Washington.
Um, I'll, I'll keep this real brief. Uh, last Thursday, uh, we had a celebration for one of Redding High's most, um, recognized alumnus. Uh, it's a gentleman that we have the honor of inducting to our Athletic Hall of Fame that's recently, um, taken place. Um, this is a gentleman who's, um, uh, currently in the Hall of Fame at Penn State University and the National Football Hall of Fame. And we turned him, uh, to Redding High as part of a program that Allstate Insurance is doing, uh, to acknowledge the, the hometowns of all of the individuals that are, uh, have busts in Canton, Ohio. Um, it's, it's not fair that their busts and their plaques only reside, um, there, that the students, the, the community and, um, friends should have the ability to, uh, read how they're, uh, received around, around the country and around the world. So Lennymore was brought back, you know, to a ceremony that was conducted in the auditorium on Thursday. Uh, we had representatives from, uh, the city of Redding. There were proclamations. It was deemed Lennymore Day. Uh, the bust, uh, actually the plaque is there and we're, we're going to determine an appropriate location, uh, to, to mount that permanently, either in the Geigo or in the, in the school at some, at some place. And, uh, we also have two street signs acknowledging Lennymore Way, which we can either, um, have placed in the city with the city's cooperation and one will be placed in the school. So I just wanted, uh, to, uh, let you know that there'll be some, uh, information that'll be, be made available on the school website and put out there. I know Mike Drago did, uh, some really complimentary stories. And, um, everybody that was involved, Alan and Kristen, um, Mr. Terman, um, Mr. Flowers, who was a fabulous emcee. Uh, it was a, it was a really nice presentation and, uh, I just wanted to, uh, take a moment and acknowledge that.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn it over to the board secretary. Are there any, uh, public speaking before the board?
Yes, John Loos Music Art Calendar.
Good evening. Uh, my name is John Loos and the Department Head for Instrumental Music in the Elementary Schools here in the Redding School District. And I just wanted to present, uh, on behalf of both the Elementary Music Program and the Elementary Art Program, I'm gonna present the board and Dr. Purcell with our, uh, two thousand and thirteen spring calendar of events. And just to make you all aware, there are concerts taking place at every single elementary school here in the school district, starting, I believe, this week and carrying on to the end of the year. And many of the schools also have an art show that will be on display, either during the concert or possibly at a different time. And I also wanted to point out the two main events that take place this spring- Uh, we also wanted to point out the two main events that take place this spring, probably the biggest highlights, um, of our music department, and that is the District Line Art Show, which will take place on Sunday, May the twelfth, uh, from nine to four P M., and Monday, May fourteenth, from four to seven P M. And, uh, that will feature artwork from first through twelfth grades on display, and will take place at the Garber Works this year. And the art department's very excited to have such a close partnership with the Garber Works, and that'll be a wonderful place to display our students' work. Uh, the other thing I'd like to draw special attention to is the Elementary City Concert, which takes place on Thursday, May sixteenth, at seven P M., and that will take place here at the Royal High School Auditorium, and that will feature performances from, uh, Elementary City Band, Class, and Orchestra. And that, uh, that showcase is students from across the entire school district, and, uh, there are usually hundreds of children involved with that. So, uh, off your schedules and time permits, and you're able to make it out tomorrow, match those events, we'd love to see you out there, support the kids, like, I share with our scouts and parent and everything we've been working on this year. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to encourage the board that if you've not ever attended the All-City Elementary Concert, to please come, I, I come every year. It is a retreat to see our elementary students, um, perform at that All-City Concert, and, um, it's a huge number of students, and, um, if you're interested in the music program and what it does in Reading, and it's an awesome thing to see how those teachers, um, what they do with our students at that concert. Um, it's, it's really, it's incredible, and they do a fine job every single year. They have, it's, it's, it's really great. It's the band and the orchestra, and they're, they're all, and the chorus is really incredible.
We have one more speaker, Jessie Rivera, Reading School District Policies.
Hi, I was asked to speak, um, for Mr. Cooper, um, this afternoon, or, I guess, yesterday afternoon. Um, I'm a parent with the Reading School District, um, I take care of four of my siblings, I have custody of, um, and I recently wrote to Mr. Campbell, uh, to address some concerns I had. Uh, hello, I'm writing as a frustrated parent of the Reading School District. I'm releasing parents of my four siblings, two of which attend the Citadel. Unfortunately, I reside on the border of Mifflin and Reading School District, and I must say that I was initially excited about the opportunity to have a great school experience, and I neglected to believe the reputation the district carries. The crime and violence and the indifferent teachers the Reading School District has been labeled with is not what I'm referring to. The problems I have encountered stem from the ridiculous school policies such as early dismissal, late-day starts, transportation issues, and apathetic staff. The amount of days the students are asked to arrive late or have early dismissal due to PSAs, parent-teacher conferences, and first Monday of each month is absurd. Not to mention that during those days, students are watching movies with no classroom or homework assignment listed on the parent access site. Their learning is severely hindered, and from speaking with other district parents, it is almost abusive. It's hard to imagine that there is not another alternative to these situations other than reducing school hours. Today alone, my ninth-grade sister was scheduled to report to school at ten A M. She contacted the Citadel office to confirm the bus pickup time, and was told to be there promptly at nine-thirty-two. After twenty minutes, the bus still had not arrived. I contacted the main office, only to be told, yeah, we've been getting a lot of calls, I think they're running late. After letting her know I was more than twenty minutes late, I was told if I had further things to say, I could speak with Mr. Campbell, however, upon transfer, the call dropped. I immediately called back, however, the main office did not answer. This has happened on numerous occasions while trying to speak with other teachers. I was then surprised to hear that the Belmont Faculty, which is the bus stop, called the Transportation Department, who informed her that the bus was not scheduled to arrive that morning. I was able to take her to school after leaving work early, however, she arrived twenty minutes later than the ten A M. late start date. I'm not sure who would be the person to write my grievances to, so I hope this is a start. It's incomprehensible that a full-time working parent would be able to manage one student, let alone multiple students at the district reasonably, due to constant disorder and chaotic structure. Thank you.
Thank you, any other?
No, there are no other speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Um, this month, um, is Autism Awareness Month, and the staff members have been busy, um, planning for this too, working with, uh, Ms. Dentis, our Special Education Director, as well as Ms. Boyd. So at your seat, you'll see some colored piece, puzzle pieces, um, that you're placing, uh, places tonight, and they were done by our students in the Autistic Support Program at the elementary level. We asked our students to be artists and draw a, uh, design a special piece of puzzle using their primary colors. We have programs located at Thirteenth and Union Elementary School, Sixteenth and Hawk Elementary School, Northwest Elementary School, Riverside Elementary School, Milmont Elementary, and Tyson Shana Elementary. Additionally, there are programs at Northeast Middle, the Intermediate High School, I'm sorry, the Intermediate and at the High School. The ribbons are shared with you, and you'll see those at your seat, I see that Mr. Cooper is here, so you, um, board members have a ribbon like this at your seat. Um, and this is the symbol for Autism Month, and it shows the awareness of autism and ongoing needs for students, as well as adults. In the state data record for two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, and this information is on the Pennsylvania Department of Education website, the average number of students in special education that are identified with autism across the state of Pennsylvania is seven point nine percent of our students. In Reading School District, the average is six point four percent. That data is always presented a year in a rea. Um, information will be posted on the district website, including the fast facts and websites for parents and others to access additional resources regarding autism. Obviously, also in our school this month, um, we have winding down with testing, um, in our elementary schools, as well as gearing up for Keystone in the, um, next month, so there's a lot of activity going on. And, uh, I, I will respond to the parent who just spoke with the Guardian. Um, that letter came in today, and I will say, uh, because it does need a response, that when I saw that this morning, it was troubling, but we already were in the school calendar year, that a parent recognized that we had all of these starts and stops. I've already talked to Mr. Peters, our finance officer, to say, let's figure out how to fix the calendar next year, to do something differently, to minimize these stops and starts for parents. So this is already on an agenda for our academic team tomorrow, when we meet, to talk about how do we plan, it will be a discussion with our principals at our May second meeting, to talk about how do we plan differently not to have these disruptions and the downtime in our instructional program. Instructions in academics are critically important, and we need to focus on that, and it starts with us as administrators, to look at our calendar, to make that more effective. Um, thank you for your concerns, and, um, maybe the board members don't know, but I was eating breakfast one Saturday morning when I saw the article in the paper regarding this Guardian, and I laughed because I have been in that situation as a student myself. My parents would tell us, if you don't do right, you'll just show up at school as we are. This is a young lady who is the Guardian, and she did show up at the Intermediate High School, because she had told her siblings, I will embarrass you, you don't do, be accountable. And she showed up in school with her hair rollers, a scarf on her head, and her pajamas. Um, it got her younger sibling's attention to get on the right track, and so I applaud her for the work that she does.
I just want to add, and not to embarrass her, but, since I was at a conference, and they were talking at the conference, well, what makes the difference in school? Uh, how do, how do schools become great? How do schools who are in urban environments, how do they turn around and, and turn it around and go in the other direction? And I, I would like to think that with parents such as Jessie, uh, whether she is a biological parent or whatever she is, but to show the interest, to, to jump in with both hands and both feet to make a difference for her siblings, I think is commendable. And she's not just talking the talk, she's walking the walk. And I would encourage other parents to do likewise. If you, if you want to turn our kids around, and you, you want it to be meaningful, and we want to stop some of the things that are happening at the Reading Intermediate High School and at the High School, it's gonna take parents, it's gonna take parents like Jessie, uh, you know, to wrap our arms around our kids, and, and that's what it's gonna take, and she's just one of those people, so I would applaud you as well, thank you.
Next, we're gonna do some presentations, um, the first presentation, um, we're gonna ask Mr. Formeyer, Moyer, to come forth, and I guess, Mr. Cooper, are you gonna move forward to present? Um, okay, you need that, and I'll be quick. Um, tonight, we're honoring two veterans with their Reading High School diplomas. Mrs. Leonard Slimmer is homebound and was unable to be with us tonight, but we want to congratulate him for receiving this diploma. His son picked up the diploma today and expressed how grateful the family is for receiving it. Here with us this evening is Mr. Robin Frymoyer. Mr. Frymoyer volunteer, voluntarily enlisted in Marine Corps at age seventeen in nineteen fifty. He was honorably discharged in nineteen fifty-four after attaining the rank of sergeant. Mr. Frymoyer worked for more than thirty years with the postal service. He started as a clerk and worked his way up to postmaster. He served as postmaster at three different locations, including Walmsdorff and Temple. He retired from the Temple Post Office in nineteen eighty-eight. Mr. Frymoyer is now eighty years old, and say he's proud to have dedicated his life to serving others. He's here tonight with his son Curtis, and Curtis, if you would like to stand up, so you're taking a proud picture, um, his daughter Kelly, and his companion Rose Marie.
I know all of you can't see this, but this is a picture, uh, of, of him, and if you notice, he was a Marine. Okay? And he's, he's handsomely attired, uh, and it just goes to show you that what comes out of Reading are great, uh, what, the individuals that come out of Reading go on to lead productive lives, and he's just yet another example that this city has always produced, uh, and continues to produce, uh, good individuals.
What you're looking at here is a picture of a high school dropout who left school in junior year at Reading Senior High School to join the Marines. At seventeen, I joined the Marines, I left for Korea to serve my country. When I got there, I found out I was too young to go into combat. You had to be eighteen years old. So I stayed in Japan for four months until I attained that age. Two days before my birthday, they shipped me over. So, uh, it was quite an experience. I spent my whole eighteenth birthday in Korea. I received a field commission. I survived four battle campa, campaigns. And while my classmates of the nineteen fifty class were heading for graduation, I was being trained for combat as a U.S. Marine. I'm proud to have served in the Marine Corps, and I'm thankful to the administration and the school board for recognizing me for this prestigious award. Thank you so much.
Next for recognition is that we have some of our student athletes here tonight, and I have, um, several students who did, um, respond that they would be in attendance, and Mr. Cooper has those names, and then I'm gonna ask them to come forward, uh, where Mr. Cooper's standing. Brian Alvarado. Oliver Calvo. Louis Cologne. Gabrielle Indiger. Tyree Gibson. Elijah Giddens. She's not able to be here, but we want to congratulate Baba Naples, who was unable to be here tonight because she felt, then especially... Okay, I'm seeing Naples, Wamp, Waip, Wamp, Waip. I apologize for that, and I have abbreviated notes here on that student, so I apologize. Um, number eight, because I'm going to have better than number five, Joe Danny Raymonds. And this is a fancy writing of Alexander, but I think I'm still pronouncing it right. We looked at it today and said, that's so fancy, Rivera. And Julius Young Trapp. Gabrielle Indiger, I, I did call, that's... Oh, well, we have some students, let me go back through here. And then what I want to do is ask that any other students come in that, um, may be athletes who are supposed to be recognized tonight. If you came in and you were to be recognized, um, I'm not sure we have a certificate, but I want you to come down and give your name to Mr. Cooper, because you only have the names called that we actually have certificates for. Um, and so if you'll give Mr. Cooper your name, then we'll check if we have...
Okay. The names are as follows, Jewel Hawk. Jaylen Stern. Isis Thor. Dana Whitmore. Cassandra Norway. Tiffany Lock, Tiffany. Obagina. Ova. Omar Guzman. Imani. We also, I'll just, since either than Oscar Ayala. Ayala's got. Gil Benz. Jaylen Bransford. Mimi Burdean. Melika Coates. Deanna Connington. Asia Crawford. Julia Desk, Deskup. Alexa Scott. Abuqal Carlo. Ed Linderman. Thurman Riviera. Jonathan Romero. Miguel Ruiz. Matt Sensig. And Jose Velasquez. Let me just, let me just read what this says. The certificate is presented in recognition of the recent... "The certificate is presented in recognition of your recent honor and/or accomplishment. The Reading School District Board members and superintendent applaud you." If we can give them another hand of applause, please.
We're gonna ask our athletes if they'll go to the side and take a picture.
Take pictures. Let's take some pictures. And these athletes represent a wide range of sports. Basketball, football, track...
No, it's just the winter sports.
It's the... I'm sorry, the winter sports.
Basketball, water polo.
Basketball, water polo, wrestling. And all of that. You can tell I'm not an athlete.
And the only other thing is that at your seat tonight, Mr. Termit's staff, they've placed an invitation to the board members about your attending graduation ceremony on June sixth and some things you need to respond to. Sort of if you can respond to that invitation.
Thank you.
In order to keep this thing moving, can we have the student report, please? We're ready for the student report?
Wait, 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 okay. Okay, good evening, everyone. As you know, I am Dura Topagon. But I'm here to introduce the new student government president, Christian. I will be your former student government president. I did the transition last month, so, Christian, if you would like to take it from here.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Christian Sodano, and I'm going to be stepping in as the student government president for the two thousand thirteen slash fourteen year. I'm in eleventh grade, becoming an upcoming senior. The club sports I'm in are runners' club, student government, key club, and wrestling, and obviously ROTC, armed drill team. I aspire to go to Annapolis, which is very, very hard. But if that doesn't work out, I plan to go to UCLA or Penn State University. For the student report, the family consumer science class has studied. Studying food nutrition will have their spring multicultural food festival. On Thursday, May ninth, Mrs. Welp students are asked to bring foods for their families' cultures. This is a celebration of food and family traditions. This class also served food to Lenny Moore at his reception last Thursday, April eighteenth. The ecology club participated in the peace march and the Great American Cleanup. Ecology Club, Key Club, and Student Government will also be participating in the spring cleaning of our community sponsored by Judy Swank, during which we will clean up City Park on Saturday, April twenty-ninth. I'm sorry, April twenty-seventh. Two thousand thirteen senior prom is May tenth at the Inn of Reading. It's weird here, I'm sorry. But the varsity girls' basketball, ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade players, played at the AFBE tournament, Athletes with Better Education, at Allberry College at April nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first in the ages of eighteen-plus bracket. Girls finished three and one. AFB holds tournaments throughout eastern Pennsylvania for girls and boys to play during their offseason so they may continue to learn the sport. Project Peace held its peace march at April twentieth at City Park. Several clubs of the high school, intermediate high school, and four middle schools were represented. Freshman girls' basketball, ninth grade, competed against students in the donor evening contest. It was very competitive. Sunday, April fourteenth, the RHS music department held its annual pop concert at the Citadel. The current goal is up for the production of Camp Rock on Friday, April twenty-sixth, and Saturday, April twenty-seventh, at eight P.M. in the Reading High School auditorium. April seventeenth, for Mr. Core and Mr. Hallman's history class, travel to Washington, D.C. to take signs of our nation's capital. The students visited Lincoln Memorial, the World War II Memorial, Forest Theater, and the U.S. Capitol. Students in the faculty of Rottling, Germany, came to Reading High School as a part of their German-American exchange program. The students and faculty will be visiting Reading in the surrounding areas in the next two weeks. During their visit, the students will be attending classes from Reading High and the Citadel, as well as visiting Washington, D.C., the Gobble Works, New York City, and of course, shopping at the Philadelphia Premium Outlets. Congratulations to color guard and their outstanding performance at their competition this weekend. They finished second place with a score of eighty-three point one. Their rank now overall is fifth out of fifty guards in the class throughout their TIAA circuit. Orders have begun. Girls will be shopping for their prom dresses at Reading High in room forty-nineteen. And on Wednesday and Thursday after school, no cash, no checks, and credit cards will be taken. One free dress for a student who is attending senior prom. Dress will be donated by the local businesses throughout Berks County. Thirty-nine students were selected dresses this afternoon from over six hundred dresses to choose from. Channel sixty-nine news was there to view this event. April fourth, some of the school fund as part of the Battle of Ages Month, where the teachers versus students basketball game came down to the last basketball. Students won fifty-nine to sixty-five. Oh, fifty-nine to fifty-six, sorry. A Reading High School junior was crowned the first team Miss Reading in the competition at the Abraham Lincoln Hotel. Rodarius Richardson, sixteen, performed a salsa dance and went over the judges in a inaugural competition. Jacenya Martinez, seventeen, was a runner-up, followed by Annie Rose Tavarez, sixteen, Santa Rosa Alacan, sixteen, and Jessica Cruz, seventeen. All are Reading High students. The winner will receive a scholarship to the school of her choice, with the amount depending on how much was raised throughout the donation and ticket sales. Sixteen Hawk School held its Dad's and Kids' Day Pizza. In the cafeteria, this has been growing trend throughout the Berks County and strengthening the bond between father and daughter throughout the school activities. The Citadel held its parent workshop for scheduling this past weekend. It is to create more involvement of the students and parents of the child's future. Author A.S. King, event on Tuesday, April twenty-third, at Reading High School Key Club, is hosting a free event with author A.S. King on Tuesday, April twenty-third, from six to seven P.M. at Reading High School. She will discuss the power of youth, as well share her life story and describe how writing helped her overcome obstacles. Attendees are asked to bring books to donate the Reading Public Library in honor of the library's two-hundred-fifty anniversary. Thank you.
Thank you. Approval of minutes. Before you have the special committee meeting minutes of January twenty-ninth and February sixth, regular board meeting minutes of February twenty-seventh and regular board meeting March twenty-seventh. Are there any additions to the minutes?
No. If you're talking to me, I can't see.
Voice secretary, please poll the board.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Hebner?
Yes.
Mrs. McCree?
Yes.
Ms. Stroman?
Yes.
Mrs. Torres Figueroa?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays.
Is there any additional public speaking?
No.
We move to the force of committee. We'll turn to human resources, Mrs. Acosta.
Good evening, Mr. President. Human resources, educational, and personnel, we have a few resolutions to take as a block. I'll be taking EP one oh seven to EP twenty-nine with the exceptions of EP one twenty-five.
Move by Mr. Washington, second by Ms. Stroman. Comments, questions? Madam Secretary, oh, go ahead.
I just would like to recognize that we have several major retirements of teachers, and I just wanna, you know, recognize them. Several of the teachers here were teachers of my kids, and so I just think it's noteworthy to recognize some of the teachers that are retiring that have been teaching in the district for a long period of time and have given a lot of service to the district that will be retiring this year from EP one oh eight to one oh two. It's just noteworthy to mention the retirements of our teachers.
What I'll add to that, Mrs. McCree, is that Ms. Go-Kay and Ms. Boyd are planning a reception for retirees next month. And it'll be something like cooking and lunch and start a little bit before board meeting and hope that board members will be able to come and thank them for their service.
That's good, because that's a lot of views in here, and we need to honor their service in the district.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Madam Secretary, please poll the board.
Mr. Hebner?
Yes.
Mrs. McCree?
Yes.
Ms. Stroman?
Yes.
Mrs. Torres Figueroa?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays.
EP one twenty-five.
Move by Mr. Washington, second by Mrs. McCree. Comments or questions? Are you making a comment?
Yes, I am. With this position that we have actually long waited to fill and has been, I guess, a position that has been under a lot of, I don't wanna say scrutiny, but definitely under the microscope, I had shared in our committee meeting that I'd asked with regards to the process and the procedure, just to make sure that we were trying to reach as many qualified and capable candidates. And I had mentioned specifically with regards to the needs of this district, outside of the conciliation agreement that we have with the PHRC, that we continue to embrace diversity. And I know, for the most part, the conversations I've had with board members and Dr. Purcell, that is the goal. Just surprised me that we had the same person. I had not really besides what her resume had actually stated, known a little bit more about the candidate. But Dr. Purcell went into more detail at our committee and made mention about her experience with regards to data and equity positions. I had stated that my preference would have been someone who was bilingual, and I had stated that. At the committee meeting was myself and Mrs. Acosta and Mr. Storch. And the reason I had stated that is that as this population of our student body continues to grow, in the sense of Latino student body, I know that we have significant amount of Latino or bilingual, bicultural employees in the district. I recognize that. But one of the issues that really troubles me, as I hear parents and community members, is that cultural exchange, how it's... we lack it. And this individual coming in with the agreement that we have the PHRC, outside of the data analysis and preparing the reports, really has to be able to recognize that and connect with our families and our schools. So I thought long, hard about it, and given what was expressed and stated in committee meeting, that this person truly is, again, was very committed and persevered. Now, she did not get the support the first time around, but she thought that she is the individual, she applied the second time around. She says, "I'm dedicated, I really think that I am the best person for the job." So she went through the process the second time around. And that, for me, was admirable, even though it's not the picture of the person that I would like for this position. So I thought about it, and with that being said, Dr. Purcell, this is the person you're bringing forward that you're recommending. I have to support it.
With all due respect, Dr. Purcell, I know this is your recommendation, but I will not support this. I feel that we need somebody that will reflect the student body. And one of the first tasks this person has to do is to gather the support from the community and create a board. And one of the things that will be very instrumental to work in the community is being a person that is already engaged with the community and also that be able to communicate and understand the culture of the reality of the city of Reading and the residents. So I will not support this.
Any other comments or questions? Madam Secretary, please poll the board.
Mrs. McCree?
Yes.
Ms. Stroman?
Yes.
Mrs. Torres Figueroa?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
No.
Mr. Hebner?
No.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Five yays, two nays.
Okay, let's continue. Support staff and personnel. SSP seventy-nine through SSP ninety-nine.
Move by Mr. Hebner, second by Mrs. Stroman. Comments, questions?
I just wanna... are we going at the event that you're gonna have, or you're gonna invite the support people as well? All retirees?
And what I'll add to that, because I did not know it until I went to speak with them, Mrs. McCree, is that we don't have a single association at the retirement. I mean, all of our employees come together in one association. So Ms. Go-Kay and Ms. Boyd will also be reaching out to their leadership of the association because they want to come to that reception to kind of encourage and induct them into the retiree association once they retire, so they will be present too.
Because there are several on this list that have a retiree from different organelles, you know, different unions, and I just wanna make sure. Thank you.
Madam Secretary, please poll the board.
Ms. Stroman?
Yes.
Mrs. Torres Figueroa?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Hebner?
Yes.
Mrs. McCree?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays.
Presidente de la junta escolar, por eso yo concluyo el departamento de recursos humanos.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We're now moving to curriculum technology. Mrs. McCree.
Mr. Cooper, your memory has not been serving well lately, has it? We'll have to get you some ginkgo biloba.
It's my fault.
I think the Spanish threw him off, I think so. He was enchanted, Mrs. Acosta.
I was.
I think so.
I was.
With that being said, Mr. President, members of the board, superintendent, as well as the audience members, this evening we have to present for curriculum and technology. Pardon me, lost my place now. Resolutions number fifty-two, which actually we had asked at the committee of the whole to have that actual resolution possibly separate. We do have the first one, curriculum resolution number fifty-two. So...
If it's from the general phone, we'd like to have that separate.
It is. We had a conversation today, unless you'd like to expand upon that, Dr. Purcell.
Let me say, Ms. Torres Figueroa, you and I talked, and you wanted the answer to that. We did not have it at the time we had the conversation. Then I text you a quick message, so you may not have seen it.
I did not get it.
Ms. Schlegel has now got the answer from PDE, and this can all be funded out of Title I carryover funds. So all we need to do is change the, I guess, scratch through the number that's jumbo funds and pay this from the carryover Title I funds.
Point of...
We need to... Again, just on the resolutions.
Okay.
Exactly. Then what we'll do is we'll go ahead and pull this one separately.
You can do this one by itself separately right now.
Yeah.
Would you choose to do that? What I was going to do is introduce all the other resolutions and leave that one for last. So why don't we go ahead? This was my original plan.
But before you do that, just explain for those people who may not know why this sudden, what we're doing. No, that's not what I mean.
No, I, I, that's not what I mean. The reason why the hesitancy in introducing, this goes back to the count.
So with that being said, I'd like to bring forth curriculum 53 up and through curriculum resolution number 64.
Move on, Mrs. McCree, second by Ms. Acosta. Comments, questions? Madam Secretary, please pull the board.
Mrs. Torres Figueroa.
Yes.
Mr. Washington.
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta.
Yes.
Mr. Heebner.
Yes.
Mrs. McCree.
Yes.
Ms. Stroman.
Yes.
Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays.
That leaves us with the first resolution curriculum number 52.
Move on, Mrs. McCree, second by Mr. Washington. Comments, questions?
Now I can expand upon that. The reason that there was clarification with regards to curriculum 52, there was discussion at, again, our committee of the whole on Monday with regards to the concerns of majority board members as to the funding of this actual plan, My Learning Plan. As Dr. Purcell has stated earlier, originally we had thought that funding would actually be 50% from our grants, which would be Title I and 50% from the general fund. It has now been clarified and stated to you that 100% of the cost for My Learning Plan, we actually be coming out of Title I funds.
Can you check the service date?
Service date?
The service date.
Of when this is gonna happen, Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I believe that information's in the back, the attachment. Did you look through that?
Yeah, it's showing 7-1, 2013 through 7-1, 2014.
Okay, see what you mean, yes. Dr. Purcell, are those dates correct as to when, if in fact this is approved to be actually implemented?
I, I don't know the question. June 2013 through July?
I imagine that's to be June 30th.
June 30th, it should be corrected to June 30th.
Mrs. McCree?
Six thirty, six thirty fourteen.
I'm sorry, before I hear this, Mr. Washington, is that all?
Yes.
Okay. So we're making the correction from 7-1, 2013 to 6:30, 2013.
Fourteen.
Two thousand and...
Fourteen, that's it.
Fourteen. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the first dates, yes. July 1st of 2013 to June 30th of 2014. Okay. Mrs. McCree?
What is the cost after the first year?
There is a maintenance cost to maintain that actual system, and we had... Mm-hmm, it is in here.
Decreases after?
It does. First initial fee is the largest. Mrs. Um...
I'm gonna call him, Ms. McCree.
Exactly.
Do you know that all the time for your head?
I do, it's, it's on the Schedule A in the last page of the contract, there is an initial setup fee of $2,500, and that is a one-time only fee. After that, all support is part of the contract, but it is an annual licensing fee because they annually serve each of the employees of Reddy School District, but it is adjusted by the number of employees. And even if that is after June 1st, is, there's an annual time when you revisit the contract and look at the number of people that are being monitored in the system. But it does upload all of the data to the state of Pennsylvania, we're at 48, and it tracks and monitors all of the other compliance trains that parrots need to maintain their pilot profile. I, I was just wondering about, I, I use My Learning, so I, I'm very pleased that we're finally going to a professional development tracking system. I've always used one, and we're at, I'm actually using this one currently, so I'm, I'm familiar with the software, and so I would say to the board, it is, it is a wise investment for us to do this so that the teachers, the parrots, and everyone does have a system that tracks the professional development hours, so that the parrots have a system that can be tracked for their 20 hours that they need each year. I was just curious as to how the payment is made each year, based on how many users we will have each year. Yes, and the difference in the fee is, is that they, there's a slightly different fee for teachers because of the, at the daily upload to Pennsylvania Department of Education. And these, their transcripts are available to them through their passwords, and because it's web-based, they can go anywhere and always look at it and access their, their profiles and see their training. And it's easier for the district because they can always load up what training is available, and people can sign up for their trainings, and you can always track to see what teachers are gonna be coming, because then you have access to see who has actually signed up to come to training. So it's a really good way to monitor and to keep up.
Good.
I fully support that.
Great, okay. I know that you weren't there for the actual presentation for the committee, but you sound like a great plans, we're looking forward to it. Is that it, Mrs. McCree?
Yes.
Okay, so, questions?
Madam Secretary, please pull the board.
Mr. Washington.
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sorry, I had a movie moment.
Mr. Heebner.
Yes.
Mrs. McCree.
Yes.
Ms. Stroman.
Yes.
Mrs. Torres Figueroa.
Yes.
Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays.
Mr. President, that concludes Curriculum Technology.
Finance liberal has created consideration this evening. Several resolutions, like to take resolutions 33, 34, 35, 36 as a block.
Move on, Mrs. Stroman. Second by Mrs. McCree, thank you. Comments, questions? Madam Secretary, pull the board.
Mrs. Acosta.
Yes.
Mr. Heebner.
Yes.
Mrs. McCree.
Yes.
Ms. Stroman.
Yes.
Mrs. Torres Figueroa.
Yes.
Mr. Washington.
Yes.
Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays.
Resolution 37 is post-active rate, changes effective 7-1, 2013. Um, resolution 38 is a post-change for cohort effective November 1st, 2013, for the remainder of 2013, 14 school. I pick those two together.
I'm sorry, Mr. Washington, can you repeat that again, please?
Thirty-seven and thirty-eight.
Waiting for a...
So moved.
Move by Mrs. McCree, second by, um, Mr. Acosta. Move by Mrs. Figueroa, second by Mrs. McCree. Comments, questions? You turn your plate, and I'll answer from now. No comments, questions? Madam Secretary, please pull the board.
Mr. Heebner.
Yes.
Mrs. McCree.
Yes.
Ms. Stroman.
Yes.
Mrs. Torres Figueroa.
Yes.
Mr. Washington.
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta.
Yes.
Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays.
Resolution 39 is a request to amend post-non-Medicare retire rates effective 7-1, 2013, actually it's effective January 1st, 2013 through 7-1, 2013. Take that one individually.
Okay, move on, Mrs. Stroman.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Torres Figueroa.
Wait.
Are we going to this retroactive? This is January 1st, 2013.
It's January 1st, 2013 through... What's that?
This is January 1st.
Has it been put into, it's... You read it wrong. You said it was for 13, but according to this, it's, it remained a 14-year.
Yeah, I'm guessing.
I think that rated good until June 30th, 2014. It's for, my understanding it's for January 1st, 2013 through July, or June 30th, 2013. Mr. Peters.
Yes.
How should the resolution rate?
The table, I think, clarifies the 32, and the verbiage needs to be changed. It's effective July 1st, 2013. There's already an effective rate that was passed in November that goes through June. So, it's a, it should be affected July 1st.
Yes.
Not January 1st.
I thought I already did that.
So then how should the table be?
Table needs to correct.
If they retired prior to...
Maybe with the record, you can already, in the revolution, that's a change in January to July.
July.
So the table should be July.
But it was a simple, it's the revolution.
All right, so be resolved, border school directors based on recognition administration of the district's healthcare initiative, hereby resolve the following categorizing of the healthcare rate set for the present, non-Medicare eligible retirees effective July 1st, 2013. For the remainder of 2013, 14, 15.
This is, was 12, I think?
Mr. Peters.
Effective July 1st.
Yes. Should this fiscal year be 2013, 14, or 2012, 13? July 1st, 2013 is the first day of the fiscal year, 13, 14.
All right, hold it. We have to, we have to, actually, we need to withdraw the prior motion, 'cause we're, 'cause it was incorrect, so... All right, so now we have to, um... We have, I'll reduce this one more time. Move in second, move on. Finance resolution 39.
Move by Torres, Mrs. Torres Figueroa, second by...
Second.
Mrs. Acosta.
What is the...
Now, comments, questions, but...
What is the...
July 1st, 2013, through June 30th, 2014.
Comments, questions? Is everyone clear about the dates? Hearing none?
We are, we're, we're clear about the dates.
Okay, okay.
Fuzzy on you. So, again, Mr. Peters.
Yes.
This impacts, um, non-Medicare retirees, individuals who are retired prior to July 1st, who are not eligible for Medicare. Correct?
That's correct.
And this will be the rate that they're, they're, they directly are contributing for the, for this coverage.
It's the rate that they won't contribute, paid forward for coverage.
And they'll be paying the district since it's our self-funded.
That's correct.
I'm, I'm stating this for all of us.
Thank you.
Now, when we asked for a table adjustment on the rates, this, we had gotten the rates that were being changed for the post-active rates, but I don't, I'm not clear on how, how big an impact in the adjustment in rates this is for this group. You know, are concerns they're not contributing?
You raised the rates in January, the rest are only getting their rate increase in July 1st, if there is a rate increase, don't forget. That's only on paper, they won't get a rate increase until they have a new CBA.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Other points of clarification? Madam Secretary, please pull the board.
Ms. Stroman.
Yes.
Mrs. Torres Figueroa.
Yes.
Mr. Washington.
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta.
Yes.
Mr. Heebner.
Yes.
Mrs. McCree. Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays.
Resolution 40, uh, proposed, proposed non-Medicare retire rate effective after 7-1, medical coverage and prescription only for the remainder of 2013, 14, 15.
Move by... Move by Mrs. McCree, second by Mrs. Stroman. Comments, questions?
If you have questions, ask them now.
Hearing none. I see, I see.
Anyone's unclear, ask them now.
Well, this one with regards to Medicare eligible or retirees.
This is not...
One's non-Medicare, one's Medicare.
No, 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 that's what I'm saying, the one we just voted on was non-Medicare eligible. I'm wondering if this one was Medicare eligible.
And then this word, non-Medicare eligible retirees who retired prior to 7.
And this one is...
Act of 7.
For non-Medicare eligible.
This is for the people that, they're saying that we voted today, that will affect this chart, but...
Retirements before July.
Yes, those who are retired.
This is for retirees after July.
See, that's, okay.
Non-Medicare and Medicare eligible.
For both, and we're lumping two of them into that category because they retired after that.
Two separate rates, two separate tables.
They're typically higher, that's one way to...
And why is there, I don't know, why is there such a difference?
The big guy, yeah.
Why does there such a difference for the ones after July 1st?
Well, Mr....
And the difference, the difference and the division on them, that's why, which, I mean, I, I, I wouldn't answer, you don't have to answer, you don't have to be answering them.
They gave out, they gave out handouts, and I'm sure much, and the Senate board would get, they would, they would...
Well, this, this is, this recommendation is coming forward from the finance committee, so I'm assuming that those types of questions, we can, we can discuss at the committee level. We again, went over accounting. So, any other comments or questions? Madam Secretary, pull the board.
Mrs. Torres Figueroa.
No.
Mr. Washington.
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta.
No.
Mr. Heebner.
Yes.
Mrs. McCree.
Yes.
Ms. Stroman.
Yes.
Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
Five yays, two nays.
Uh, that concludes financial.
We're going to move to facilities, Mr. Washington.
Facilities only has four resolutions for consideration, and they have all came to orders as related to work with, um, and myself.
Move by Mrs. McCree.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Torres Figueroa. Comments, questions? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, please pull the board.
Mr. Washington.
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta.
Yes.
Mr. Heebner.
Yes.
Mrs. McCree.
Yes.
Ms. Stroman.
Yes.
Mrs. Torres Figueroa.
Excuse me, yes.
Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays.
That concludes, so this is.
Moving to Student Services, Mrs. McCree.
Student Services has the following resolutions to be voted on altogether. Resolutions twenty-three, twenty-six.
Move by Mrs. Strow, Ms. Strowman?
Second.
Second by Mr. Washington? Comments, questions? Mrs. Secretary, please pull the board?
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Heebner?
Yes.
Mrs. McCree?
Yes.
Ms. Strowman?
Yes.
Mrs. Torres Figueroa?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays.
Trying to make it right, but did you see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten?
Did I see his reaction? Why missing?
The school was pretty.
No, no, did they react?
They're saying they're, they aren't, they're getting almost one a month.
Almost one a month. See, we're desensitized. We get one a month, and this one is thirty-two thousand, and it has a whole lot of stipulations, and the attorneys are getting seven. And we're totally desensitized to the fact that we pay these out every single month. We pay out a lot of money, and if I say anything, it goes in the red eagle, because I'm just making it up, I guess. But we're desensitized to how much we pay out in settlements. I'm not thinking that you though. Oh, no, you probably set me up, but that's okay.
Moving to Communications and Policy. Ms. Strowman?
We pay out a couple of dollars. Communications and Policy presents five resolutions, starting with Communications twenty-seven. Including Communications third, all taken as a block.
So, for second.
Move by Mr. Washington, second by Mrs. Torres Figueroa. Comments, questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. We're taking them as?
I'm here.
There are four, you said three.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You said five.
You said five, but they're four.
They're four.
I'm sorry. We're taking them all as a block? Yes, that's correct.
Comments, questions? Madam Secretary, please pull the board?
Mr. Heebner?
Yes.
Mrs. McCree?
No.
Ms. Strowman?
Yes.
Mrs. Torres Figueroa?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Six yays, one nay.
Extra for Communications and Policy.
Mr. Washington? Extra Christopher has two resolutions for consideration, Resolution eight, which is, um, Spring Coach salaries. Resolution nine, the Alphane JRO TC student awards for two thousand thirteen.
Move by Mrs. McCree, second by, uh, Mr. Heebner. Comments, questions? Madam Secretary, please pull the board?
Mrs. McCree?
Yes.
Ms. Strowman?
Yes.
Mrs. Torres Figueroa?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Heebner?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays.
We do a lot of it. Moving to, uh, general resolutions, please. General Resolution twenty-eight.
For second.
It's been moved by Mrs. McCree, second by, uh, Mrs. Torres Figueroa. Comments or questions? Madam Secretary, please pull the board?
Ms. Strowman?
Yes.
Mrs. Torres Figueroa?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Just a little, just a little? It's me, it's me. Yes.
Mr. Heebner?
Yes.
Mrs. McCree?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays.
General Resolution twenty-nine.
Some of them.
Move by Mrs. McCree, second by Mr. Washington? Comments, questions?
Comments, questions?
Madam Secretary, please pull the board?
Mrs. Torres Figueroa?
Do you want it, let us short? Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Heebner?
Yes.
Mrs. McCree? Bueller?
Yes.
Ms. Strowman?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays.
Okay, General Resolution thirty-one.
Thirty.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm checking this. Thirty. Whereas the committee of the board directs the Valley Student District held the hearing on May eighth, Monday, April eighth, two thousand thirteen, at one-thirty. At the recommendation of the school administration for its freshman student number one-one-seven-four-zero-seven.
Second.
Move by Mrs. McCree, second by Mrs. Acosta. Comments, uh, pull the board?
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Heebner?
Yes.
Mrs. McCree?
Yes.
Ms. Strowman?
Yes.
Mrs. Torres Figueroa?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays.
Uh, General Resolution thirty-one, student number one-two-six-seven-zero-six.
Seven.
Move by Mr. Washington, second by Mrs. Acosta? Madam Secretary, please pull the board?
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Heebner?
Yes.
Mrs. McCree? Ms. Strowman?
Yes.
Mrs. Torres Figueroa?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays.
General Resolution thirty-two, student number one-two-eight-six-five-seven. Move by Mrs. McCree?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Torres Figueroa. Madam Secretary, please pull the board?
Mr. Heebner?
Yes.
Mrs. McCree? Ms. Strowman?
Yes.
Mrs. Torres Figueroa?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays.
General Resolution thirty-three, student number three-one-two-two-nine-four.
Some of them.
Move by Mrs. Torres Figueroa, second by Ms. Strowman? Please pull, Madam Secretary, please pull the board?
Mrs. McCree?
Yes.
Ms. Strowman?
Yes.
Mrs. Torres Figueroa?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Heebner?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays.
I am passing out, uh, General Resolution thirty-four. Now, uh, General Resolution thirty-two, as you know, we had, uh, interviews for two candidates, uh, uh, on Monday. We now, it comes, we, now is that time that we need to pick a candidate. Uh, Mr. Storch could not be with us tonight, he's ill. However he would like for me, I will call him when we get ready to vote. He will, he still will find your passive vote.
Yeah. I thought he had to participate in the roll call. Participate to vote.
He can't do that.
He can't do it.
Yeah, because that's what I was told at one time when I tried.
Mission agreed correctly.
Okay, he, he did that, okay.
I mean, he's not gonna be happy, but he has to participate in the whole meeting and be in roll call.
He, he did call part of the meeting, but he did not participate in the roll call. You look, it's go, uh, who's here?
Are we going to write it down and send it to you?
Uh, what's the board's pleasure and how do you want to, how do you want to do this? We can do ballots, or we can, uh, uh, we, we talked about candidates, and it's a matter of each board having a pick of them individually. We can do that via the ballot, or we, we can do a, uh, go around and personally transfer it all. Your point is?
Should we write it down and send it to you? I wanted, I would say, recognize that you need five votes, because it bodes well to just fill it out and send it back to the president of the town. And five votes in your board.
We can write it here and send it to you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, there are four votes for Wilson Pacey and two for Gary Weyman. We believe you need five votes if you could give us a moment for a vote. You're right. I'm gonna have Mr. Guy to read this section to you so you understand it. Go ahead and read that. Says, "The remaining qualified members, fulfilling the vacant seat, and remaining qualified members of the board of school directors shall, by a majority vote thereof, fill such vacancies in all the land." They have eight, there's eight remaining members. So you, so you're unhealed. You need to have five.
And I'm, it's about seven, seven in the night.
No, but it's eight of us all together.
I know, but I said, okay, it's only seven of us here present tonight.
Still five of us here have to vote, yes.
Five of the seven have to vote in favor of that person.
Five of the seven have to vote.
Okay. I, um, with the board's pleasure.
And we vote again? Can we somebody who changed their vote?
You, you could vote again. You've not, you've not, there's not a resolution on the table you voted, so, so, talking about Robert Schulz's order here, you, you can cast a second ballot.
Need another piece of paper?
Or can someone, uh, one of the? What, can just change your vote? Let's give them a last little question.
Yeah, it's probably, probably easier to use a second ballot.
Here's a little piece of paper. Here's some paper, just write them down.
Oh, okay.
You got enough?
You have seven.
It remains four-three.
If it remains the same and no one changes their vote, this is our last opportunity. The courts will decide.
What was, what was, uh, what was Dembowski's resignation? Twenty-six. On the twenty-sixth. So you, do you have an opportunity to have a special meeting if you want?
In two days.
That's, or, tonight, or, or if you don't pick, it then goes into the?
It goes into the court.
Where, where it would stand, if, if Harry was here and he gave his vote, he gave his vote to Will, correct? So it would have been five-three. If we had a special meeting and everybody attends and no one changes their vote?
That is if everybody attends. That's in two days. You can't advertise a meeting in two days.
And what I'm saying is from, from a standard process, if we had, had everybody present, if we were able to convene a special meeting, advertising was full.
We can't suppose that we're not there.
Let's do one run. Let's do one more. No, let's do one more.
It's a minute.
Yeah, I'm not according to my.
Do a roll call again. Couldn't call, how do you roll call and do that?
Secretary, I'm sorry. Our secretary's recommending something, so she wants us to see if we can pass it through, okay? It's a good idea to see if in fact this works for us tonight. We can do not adjourn, we can do roll call only, or again. To be able, I'm not.
It's not gonna matter, it's not gonna matter.
So someone has basically changed their. Okay?
I'm not submitting to a meeting in two days.
It doesn't matter.
Surprise.
No, 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 the intent was to then do roll call again to them, include Mr. Storch, but then we have to see if that's even beatable.
No, you can't. He should have had roll call at the beginning of.
Again, it was just a.
She was so involved in this meeting, this week, not to adjourn. They were submitting to do roll call to another meeting.
Can't vote until they have one down.
The vote is eight, oh, uh, seven up, second. For Mr. Semfice.
Seven?
Yes, correct, seven.
So, hearing that, the following General Resolution, General Resolution thirty-four. Due resolve, the board of school directors appoints Will, William Semfice to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Mr. Frank Dembowski on the board effective April twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen, to the reorganization of the board from December second, two thousand. on the board effective April twenty-first, two thousand thirteen, due to reorganization of the board from December second, two thousand thirteen. Move by Mr. Washington, second by.
Second.
Second by, second by Mrs. Acosta. Comments, questions, any comments or questions? Madam Secretary, please, uh, we took the vote, uh, uh, please pull the board.
Ms. Strowman.
Yes.
Mrs. Torres Figueroa.
Yes.
Mr. Washington.
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta.
Yes.
Mr. Hevner.
Yes.
Mrs. McCree.
Yes.
Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays.
Just, uh, I handed out to the board and the superintendent, um, a packet, uh, it's a report out from the Redding, uh, Recreation Commission, which is a joint endeavor with the city of Redding and the school district. Um, in there is our first annual report, we've had our first, um, audit. Uh, Mr. Peters is the administrative representative for the school district and, uh, a very active and, uh, involved participant, so I want to thank him for his participation in the event. In addition, um, one of the notes from the students' report had to do with the, um, uh, father and daughter dance. Uh, the recommission held a father-daughter dance also at Lars Park. Um, every attendee was given a photo, um, as well as, um, other things that were provided for them there. So, this was basically the, a memory, you know, a collage and, and, and a yearbook, basically, of those individuals that attended. Uh, we only had twenty-seven individuals participating this year. Obviously, our intent is to, to grow that significantly in the future. Some of that's going to involve some coordination with what schools are already doing and what the recommission is attempting to do, but it was, it was a good event. Um, and in addition to that, they're, um, they're increasing the, um, summer playground programs. Um, several years ago, the city of Redding had, was, was at a point where there were no summer playgrounds in the city. Last year, we had, we, uh, had four playground programs. This year, we're going to have seven, actually, I think, we're just adding eight this year. Um, our intent, obviously, is to grow it and to get out to as many playgrounds and as close and service as many students as, as, as possible. Um, we're, we're in partnership with the, um, with the museum as well to offer, um, a program where they'll kind of send educational instructors out to the summer playgrounds, uh, programs that are going on, um, a couple times, uh, a month, as well as have the students, um, bus to the museum to do a playground. It's going to culminate with an art show at the museum where some of their pieces will be, um, displayed in the gallery. So, it's, it's a, it's a good relationship, something when you have an opportunity, appreciate your support. Happy to be involved and, uh.
It's nice.
No. Thank you, took the picture.
I took that picture.
Uh, yeah, Francis serves on it, Marcia, uh, Hemishtz, um. Karl Gaffigan from the county.
Any, any other updates from, uh, I guess, the new C C, uh, C C I U?
Um, C C I U, uh, I don't know if all of you are aware, but, um, Bonnie Proxwell will be retiring at the end of the school year. Um, just wanted to make that note, that was announced last Thursday to me. And I also, um, just dawned on me after we had passed the financing committee report, was sad to see that, for whatever reason, we did not get, uh, an opportunity to hear, um, Redding School District has a major stake in terms of votes relative to C C I U's budget. Um, and we didn't have the opportunity to weigh in on that. And while the other remaining school districts have approved it and it was already passed, I just think that, um, our due diligence wasn't done in terms of our representation, um, because we do hold a major number, a major number of votes that, um, I just think, for the might that we put into the I U, our voices need to be heard at that table. So, I'm just, uh, remiss that Redding School District wasn't represented. That's it.
Anything about where you see this here?
Uh, Career Technical Center is working out their budget, and I think it's going to be presented to, um, the Joint School Committee Board. Um, second week of the May should make it back to, um, I think the superintendents have reviewed it and have added their comments to it. Um, it's actually some good information, I think, that I forwarded to your attention about how they put their votes together and the presentation that they provided for, um, how they put their votes together. And, um, coming up, they just finished their, uh, they have their senior award recognition coming up in May, which is supposed to be an, it usually culminates with a really nice, uh, uh, video, uh, production that their, that their group does out there. And, um, they, they represented as well, the, they've recently been in the paper several times for things they're doing in, uh, in support of soldiers, as well as some of the things they're doing with how they did at, uh, their competition. So, the Career Technical Center is another, uh, thing that we do really, really well.
Yeah. We had yesterday, uh, museum board, I was unable to attend because of a conflict on my schedule, but I would like to remind the board that there's a vacancy there.
We know.
That we need to fill.
We know. I know what it thinks that Mr. Semtisi has always been, uh, fine on top of. Okay, um, uh, before I entertain a motion for adjournment, we need to have a brief executive session. Uh, it'll be brief, and we will, we will not, we will not come back to the public session. So, we think we will. We got the personnel, it's a personnel issue.